Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. I bring greetings to each of you from the ancestral lands of the Tokobaga Seminole and Mikasuki tribes, the original custodians of the land we share. My name is Joshua Bean and I have the privilege of serving as Innovation Officer for the Foundation for a Healthy St. Petersburg's Center for Health Equity. I mention the inhabitants of our shared land as a way to emphasize the value of space and place. Like many historical landmarks in St. Petersburg, this building has its own story to tell. The space once served as a segregated grocery store during the same time that segregation continued to impact our schools well after Brown v. Board. And yes, some progress has been made since this landmark ruling, but despite our best efforts to reimagine all the impactful ways to advance racial equity in education, so many barriers for our Black scholars continue to exist today. We still have so much more work to do, but this is why we're gathered here this evening, to commemorate the 70th anniversary of the Brown versus Board of Education. But I do want to note that commemorate is not the same as celebrate. We're also here to grapple with where we went wrong in an attempt to provide a quality education for all students. And how do we collectively ensure that the dreams of so many of our Black children are no longer deferred? These are the experiences and conversations we strive to have here at the center, and we're so grateful that you are here. Can't wait to learn, connect, and create this evening. So to officially get this evening started, it's a great honor to welcome to the stage our fearless leader, the President and CEO of the Foundation for a Healthy St. Petersburg, the Dr. Kanika Tomlin.
Thank you, Josh, for that wonderful introduction and for your service as an educator before you joined our team tonight as we focus on the importance of education. I'm so mindful of your contributions and grateful. We conclude that in the field of public education, the doctrine of separate but equal has no place. Separate educational facilities are inherently unequal. On May 17th, 1954, Earl Warren, Chief Justice of the United States Supreme Court, delivered these words. "It was the unanimous decision of the highest court in our country, the seared tip on the burning spear of one of our nation's most critical points of inflection." Seven decades later, the precedent of this landmark decision stands as one of the court's greatest acts of the 20th century and continues to blaze a trail for the long and storied course of our country's journey toward equity in education. I am Dr. Kanika Tomlin, President and CEO of the Foundation for a Healthy St. Petersburg. I'm on behalf of our Board of Trustees, our awesome team, and our many partner champions for equity. I am so happy to welcome you here tonight. Brown versus Board was a momentous decision. In 1954, as you know, many communities across the United States, including our own, pointed to Plessy versus Ferguson, a previous ruling, as the right and reason to legislate racial division. That decision made by the Supreme Court in 1896 maintained that racially segregated public facilities, if equal, were fine. It seemed to seal segregation as the divided way of life in our otherwise United States. Anything but equal, this anachronistic practice persisted too long, and it carried grave consequence. Veiled under the cowardly cloak of misappropriated constitutionality, it upheld separatism, hardwired advantage for some citizens, and guaranteed by birthright disadvantage for others. Much more than a policy designed to mitigate connection within communities, legal segregation of public services and facilities served to mitigate possibilities for people of color in our country. And nowhere was that travesty of oppressed trajectory more damaging than in our schools. Sacred spaces, where young people go to see their futures crafted and their futures and potentials fulfilled. With one decision, however, Brown versus Board rendered Plessy versus Ferguson irrelevant, and with that one decision, our nation rose above its written laws to recognize a higher law, a law that sees and serves the principles of dignity, opportunity, and liberty. The courage, insight, and righteousness of that court's work changed lives, shaped futures, and shifted the trajectory of schools, communities, and people, both Black and White, many of whom are in this room tonight. So we're glad that you're here in this space, a space devoted to equity. We're honored to host this gathering because we believe that events like these, where we gather to talk about the past, how it shapes our present, and how it informs our future are critical to our shared work to advance equity and improve opportunities in the community we love and call home. Here at the Foundation, we are working hard toward these shared goals every day. Specifically, we effort racially equitable health outcomes for the people who call St. Pete home. We carry out our mission in three ways: through grant-making, strategic initiatives, and work here in our Center for Health Equity, the space in which we've all gathered tonight. All year long, this space is activated with critical work that helps advance our community's culture of health and equity. As we partner with you to do this work, we know that our health is so much more than our access to medical providers and the quality of medical care we experience. It's shaped by our economic opportunity, the kinds of jobs that are available to us, and our abilities and likelihood to grow in those jobs. It's shaped by having a safe and affordable place to live in an environment that is also healthy and safe. It is determined by the strength of our community ties and connection to various forms of support and one another. And it is most definitely influenced by our access to a high-quality education. Some may ask, what does education have to do with health? Those gathered here today know that the answer is a resounding everything. As I reflect on equity and access in education and prepare to close, I'm reminded of the impact of the individual heroes, educators, who've had a huge impact on the lives of countless children in our community over the years. I think of those who hail as teachers, counselors, and administrators, people who have changed the lives of thousands of students, one child at a time. I think about the ways deserving scholars over many decades, so many of you, my own life, how our lives have been changed and we've stepped into the fullness of our potential in ways that may have otherwise gone undiscovered, save for the insight, guidance, and love of a committed educator. And it's important to note that in the years before Brown versus Board, when schools in our nation and city were segregated by race, schools for Black students often experienced compromised resources: secondhand books, broken-down buses, discarded desks that were left over from the white schools across town. But the compromise ended there. They had no less commitment from educators, among the most talented in the industry; no less brilliance from scholars, among the most gifted in the nation; no less value for education, a defining trait for communities of color across our country. In fact, the insistence by excellent educators and administrators that Black students would excel even in a context of constant systemic inequality served as a fierce and unrelenting force for the development of Black students' social capital and self-worth. But with Black schools receiving significantly less funding and significantly fewer resources, Black teachers being paid a fraction of what white teachers were paid, while Black schools experienced limited hours and subpar facilities, the inequity was clear and the subsequent disparate outcomes unacceptable. Brown versus Board changed that, and so we commemorate that decision today. And what followed was not perfect, or seamless, or easy, as so many Black students found themselves in unfamiliar and, in some cases, unwelcoming environments, places where they were not always wanted, places where they had to fight to fit in, places where their identities had to be bargained to belong. Work to overcome these obstacles to create academic cultures of inclusion and belonging is still so required today, and so our work continues. At the Foundation, our work is concentrated at the intersection of health and race. We highlight race because the work to yield more equitable outcomes in our community and in so many communities across our country is defined by race. And so when we consider the state of education in our community, I'm so grateful, our team, our partners are so grateful, that we can host this powerful conversation where we'll examine the ways racism and racial disparities have shaped the outcomes and experiences we live today. And most importantly, we're grateful for our examination of the ways we can use what we've learned and experienced for the solutions that we craft together. So again, thank you so much for being here. Thank you to Tammy Bryant Spratling and Community Tampa Bay, Newspapers in Education, Florida's Humanities, and F-P-E-S for bringing this important conversation and opportunity to our community. It's our pleasure to share the Foundation's Center for Health Equity with you tonight and always, and we hope to see you back here again for more of this good work soon. And now it is my pleasure to introduce and welcome Joe DeLuca, President of Times Publishing Company. Joe?
Dr. Tomlin is a cherished and extended member of the Times family. It was always very difficult to follow, and I'm not even going to attempt to do that. But I did want to take a minute, both to welcome you all here, but also to give you a sense of the depth and expanse of this Brown versus Board of Education. We could call it a project, but it's a program, and it reaches all across the state of Florida. On July 25th of this year, the Times will celebrate its 140th birthday. I haven't worked there that whole time, having published its first edition, then known as the West Hillsborough Times, on that date in 1884. And as one of the oldest continuously operating businesses in Tampa Bay, we've always been committed to making a positive contribution to the Tampa Bay region through our journalism, through our community involvement, through our philanthropy, and through, of course, our Newspaper and Education Program. And that's what I wanted to spend a minute on here tonight. Since the 1970s, Tampa Bay Times Newspaper and Education Program, also known as N-I-E, we are an acronym, Happy Industry, N-I-E, has served educators, students, families, and community organizations throughout Tampa Bay by providing schools with copies of the Times, award-winning original educational publications, teacher guides, lessons plans, educator professional development materials, and much more, and all of this at zero cost to the schools, to the teachers, or the families. Last year, N-I-E provided almost 1 million digital newspaper licenses and more than 200,000 printed copies of the Tampa Bay Times to Tampa Bay area classrooms. The event that brings us here tonight is part of a larger statewide project commemorating Brown versus Board of Education, and it's spearheaded by our Newspaper and Education Team right here in Tampa Bay. It includes an N-I-E educational publication aligned with Florida standards for high school students. Printed copies of that publication were provided to high schools in Jacksonville, Miami, Tallahassee, and throughout Tampa Bay. It's also available online to download at no charge. You have a copy in front of you on your tables today, and it'll be published as a special section in the electronic edition of the Tampa Bay Times on May 17th, which, of course, is the actual anniversary of the Brown decision. The program also includes a teacher guide and a webinar and a series of four community conversations taking place in Jacksonville, Miami, Tallahassee, and, of course, right here in Tampa Bay. And we'd like to sincerely thank Florida Humanities for providing the funding for this project. They are also celebrating a birthday this year, their 50th, so happy birthday to that terrific organization. We'd also like to recognize our local partners, Community Tampa Bay, and, of course, the Foundation for a Healthy St. Petersburg, who hosts us here tonight. And we'd like to thank all of you for being here. And at this point, I have the tremendous honor of introducing two young ladies, Victoria Hardy and Shaniah Williams. Victoria and Shaniah are Pinellas County High School students and longtime participants of Community Tampa Bay programs, including Anytown and Advocacy Academy. So please join me in welcoming them as they open our program with their rendition of "Lift Every Voice and Sing." Here we go.
Ring with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening skies. Let it resound loud as the rolling sea. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. Facing the rising sun of our new day begun. Let us march on till victory is won. Raise your fists a little higher till victory is won.
All right, y'all give it up one more time for that. That was amazing. Gives you chills. All right, before I introduce our panel, you will notice there's note cards on your table. If you have questions for the panel, please, we encourage you to write your questions down. I can't guarantee that we'll get to every question, but that is what they're there for, and Tammy will give you a reminder as we close near the end of our panel discussion. With that said, it's a great honor to welcome to the stage Dr. Raymond Arseneau, Chloe Coney, Fred Hearns, and moderator Tammy Bryant Spratling. Please come to the stage.
Thank you so much for joining us this evening. How has the evening been for you so far? Wow, I am so, so excited for this evening, and I'm especially so, so inspired by our young people who have attended our Anytown program. They have also volunteered for us, participated in our annual event. Thank you so, so much for Victoria and Shaniah for singing this evening. That was so beautiful. And thank you for Dr. Tomlin's remarks this evening that I believe truly set a tone for us. I have the hardest job in this room this evening, which is the fact that these three folks that we have on this panel could be keynote speakers and could write a biography that would make a top-10 list any single day. So to be able to ensure that we have some time this evening, I'm going to give them a lot of room to just kind of narrate ourselves through their stories, because their stories and their journeys are so incredibly powerful. I'm also going to leave it to you to read their bios in our program that we have so that we can go straight into it, and I don't have to give too much of that background. I know they'll be really happy to share their stories with you. I'm going to give you a couple reminders this evening. This is the first one, but one of the materials that you have in front of you is a survey. It's so incredibly important for us that you complete that survey, because we get the opportunity to receive grant funding, like we did for the Florida Humanities, for this project, when we show that we've had some really positive outcomes. So please help us have incredible programs like this by completing those surveys by the end of the program. I also want to remind you, though Josh did a wonderful job to touch on this, that you have some index cards and pens and glass bowls to place any questions that you have in. And I'll give you a reminder when we're getting close to turning it over to some Q&amp;A. Finally, for just housekeeping matters, I want to say thank you so much to the Newspapers in Education at the Tampa Bay Times and also our statewide partners. So this is the third live event that we've had so far, and we'll have one more on May 6th. That one's in Tallahassee. But we've had one in Miami, and we've had one in Jacksonville. And so this truly has been a statewide partnership, something that's been really exciting for me to see to come to fruition. We, as Community Tampa Bay, used to be a chapter of the National Conference for Christians and Jews, or NCCJ. And ourselves, with two sister organizations, One Jacks out of Jacksonville and Mosaic Miami, were three of the four of the different cities that hosted these events. So it's the first time we did something like that in modern history, and we're very, very proud that we were able to work with the Tampa Bay Times and newspapers in each one of those communities to make sure that that publication gets across the state to educators across all over our classrooms. So with that, I want to start to transition into our incredible panel here. And Ray is going to kind of begin to build off of what Dr. Tomlin started, which was a historical journey of how we got to the Brown versus Board of Education decision. And I know, Ray, when we talked beforehand, you especially also talked about how the NAACP had such a strategy for decades before we got to Brown. So maybe that might be a good place to get us started tonight, if you wouldn't mind.
Can you hear me? Is the mic okay? Please forgive my voice. I just came back from a long trip in Europe, and I brought back, I don't think it's the Spanish flu. I went to a doctor. I don't have the flu or COVID, so I'm not too dangerous, but that's why my voice is so strange. But I'm very happy to be here. I've worked with Tammy before. We did a number of civil rights tours of the Deep South, and she was my associate and kept us going, and indispensable, so it's great to see her again. And also Kanika, so wonderful that she's the head of this organization. I've known her for years, and she's really an incredible resource for the community and her. Her late husband, Terry, was one of my all-time favorite students. No one could break up a class better than Terry. He was quite a character, as those of you who knew him, but a wonderful person. So think about his memory. Well, the Brown decision, let me try to put it in some historical context without going on too long. It's a complicated story, and I brought along a couple of books just to recommend to you, if you have a deeper interest. The classic book that historians look to on the Brown decision is actually not by historians, by a novelist, Richard Kluger, and it's called "Simple Justice." And it's, uh... It's quite a tome, you can see. It's a big challenge, and it's even bigger than the books that I write, but it's absolutely wonderful narrative of basically how we got to where we are. Starts in the 18th century, actually. It's an extraordinary piece of work. But if you don't have a month to devote to Richard Kluger, I would recommend James Patterson. It's called "Brown v. Board of Education." He was a great historian who taught for many years at Brown, and this was actually the first volume in a series that Oxford University Press published called "Critical Moments in American History." And this was the first book. My book on the Freedom Riders was, I think, the sixth in the series, but this is the best compendium, which goes up to the late 1990s. So it doesn't tell the whole story, but it's quite extraordinary, really. I was looking at it again today and remembering what a wonderful job he did on this, a very difficult subject. So the history of the Brown decision is full of success and failure. I think that's maybe the way to sum it up. But there are all kinds of nuances and ironies about how it played out in American history. You know, the whole position of education in American life has been hugely important, you know, going back to the beginning of our society. But public education actually came fairly late, you know, in the 19th century. Other than Horace Mann in Massachusetts starting the public schools there, the vast majority of Americans didn't have any opportunity to go to public schools. There were private academies. It's really only in the late 19th century that public education as we know it began. And sadly, of course, from the beginning, it was rigidly segregated by race. At first, by custom, it was an outgrowth of the racism of the general population, and only later did it become imprinted in law. And that, of course, is mostly what the Brown decision was all about, to try to end that. And we often, we talk about two different kinds of racial segregation. One is de facto, using the Latin term, simply means in fact, and that's the kind we find mostly north of the Mason-Dixon line. Those of you who grew up outside of the South may be very familiar with that. It wasn't imposed by law, except in a few local laws and some state legislatures, Arizona, New Mexico, Wyoming, and Kansas, allowed local civil units to institute segregation by law if they wanted to, okay? But in the South, you have a different system. It's de jure, in law, mandated. If the law is enforced, no one can violate it. So Blacks and Whites cannot get together to learn together, even if they want to, under this system. It's not voluntary. It's not hit or miss. It's sort of omnipresent in Southern life. So it's been, it's an old controversy about how race and education intersect. And in the 19th century, when the public schools began, there really wasn't any debate about racial integration or desegregation. It really wasn't even on the radar screen. It was simply access to education at all. Of course, the Freedmen's Bureau started freedom schools in the late 1860s and early 1870s, but it was a desperate situation, because African-Americans had been, most Black families had been here long enough to know that education was key to social mobility, to enhancing your self-worth, and making something of your life without education is pretty difficult. And, of course, the white supremacists who controlled the South knew that all too well. So they made it illegal, in many cases, for slaves to learn to read, to go to school, to congregate in any kind of gatherings, to discuss ideas. to congregate in any kind of gatherings, to discuss ideas. Those things were all essentially forbidden. So long before the first Jim Crow law was passed, the Jim Crow laws emerged, really a few of them in the 1880s, then really sort of take shape in the 1890s. And it's the early 20th century, which is sort of the height of Jim Crow culture, where everything is mandated by law, including segregated schools. The first real, I'd say concerted attempt to fight that system of segregated schools began only after the NAACP was founded in 1909. There really wasn't any organization built into that and it became, of course, the largest and most important civil rights organization in the United States and grew bigger and bigger as time, as time went on. It became essentially a legal organization of lawyers and other people committed to equal justice. And in the early years, they didn't really talk about schools in the 20s, for example. It was really more about trying to get an anti-lynching law. They were involved in a number of issues, but they were trying to create a kind of legal basis for black citizenship, really. And it's really only in the late 1920s, early 1930s that the NAACP decides that education is the most important issue for them. I mean, they're interested in employment discrimination, they're interested in housing discrimination, in public accommodations, all those things, but education is clearly number one for the NAACP. And in 1930, there was a lawyer working for them, relatively new addition to their staff, man named Nathan Margold, who was a Jewish emigre from Romania, a recent emigre, very talented lawyer, later worked for the Solicitor General during the New Deal, Franklin Roosevelt's administration. Margold came up with something called the Margold Report, which I think very few Americans probably have ever heard of, but it's incredibly important in the story of the Brown decision because Nathan Margold was a smart guy and he did an extensive survey of the courts and the extent to which they were racially discriminatory, the extent to which they had any possibility of changing the laws, of attacking Plessy versus Ferguson, of course, which had been the law of the land since 1896, separate but equal. And his report, which was not made public, by the way, this is all within the NAACP. W. B. Du Bois, Charles Hamilton Houston, Thurgood Marshall, people like that, were all involved with this. And the Margold Report essentially said, there's no way in the world we're going to be able to overturn Plessy versus Ferguson in the immediate or even near future. The court system is just stacked against us and we're going to be battering our heads against a wall if we try to attack Plessy and try to convince the mainstream of America that this is contrary to the ideals of the American Revolution or the Declaration of Independence or just of simple justice. So the Margold Report essentially said, for the foreseeable future, we need to attack Plessy versus Ferguson along the lines that to prove that, for example, the schools are not equal. It would be pretty easy to do that because the expenditures spent on black students as opposed to white students were just pathetic in state after state in the South. And as Kanika said in her introduction, you know, it was just a horrific situation for in terms of material conditions of the schools. And in many areas of the South, there were no black schools at all. No black high schools, no black middle schools, just a very rudimentary elementary education. So the NAACP followed this from 1930 to 1950, where they did not attack, even though they wanted to. I mean, they despised Plessy versus Ferguson. They knew someday they'd have to face this, but they were waiting for the nation to catch up with them, for the courts to catch up with them. Supreme Court in the early 20th century was notoriously reactionary and conservative, particularly on matters of race. There was really no chance and the entire federal system really was not much better than the state and local courts in that regard. So it really, they had to wait through the New Deal, through the Great Depression, through World War II, which of course brought a great change in public attitudes because it was clear that Nazism had a very high racial component. Nazism was a form of racism and it gave racism a bad name. For the first time, really, a lot of Americans began to rethink their commitment to white supremacy, to racial discrimination. The times were really changing. And so through the Truman administration, finally, 1950 is the breakpoint, when Thurgood Marshall and the other leaders of the, what's called the Educational and Legal Defense Fund, they broke off from the NAACP. They were kind of a subsidiary organization so they could really concentrate on this. They finally decided, it's time. There are enough liberals on the court and maybe we can pull this off. And so they start making totally different arguments in court, saying that separate but equal is a contradiction in terms. You can't be separate and equal. And so they were attacking the very basis of the Plessy versus Ferguson, which of course didn't just control the schools because of course the Plessy case was about seating on railroad cars in Louisiana, had nothing to do with schools. But every aspect of life was segregated in the Jim Crow South, cradle to grave segregation. And I think just a very brief personal story, I'm originally from Cape Cod, about as Yankee as you can get, I guess, but I lived most of my life in the South. My father was in the Navy and we lived in the normal places, Jacksonville, Pensacola, Norfolk, other small towns in the South. But whenever he would go onboard a ship, an aircraft carrier, he'd be gone for a couple of years, we'd go back to Massachusetts, back to Cape Cod, to a town, the town is Harwich. It's about 35% Cape Verdean, mixed race, African and Portuguese. And was probably, it was no Nirvana. There was some level of discrimination, but it was probably one of the most racially integrated communities in the United States. So I spent my entire childhood hopping from this small town in Massachusetts where I was accustomed to seeing people with dark skin serving as police chief or as teachers and all kinds of positions of responsibility. And then going back to the South for two or three years into this sort of total Jim Crow, cradle to grave segregation. I think that's the origin of my initial interest in race and civil rights. I've devoted my whole career, really my whole life to it. But back to the Margold Report. So that's gone in 1950 and they start attacking the way they wanted to attack. But they had, they were, they were very nervous about it because they knew if they lost some major decision at Supreme Court level, they'd be set back another decade or another two decades. So they were terrified, really. And it was really Thurgood Marshall's, I think, his intellectual ability, his just sheer guts, that he drove them into the situation where the Brown decision could happen. He was also helped by a timely death. The Chief Justice of the Supreme Court was a man named Fred Vinson, who had really no interest in race, certainly not in racial reform whatsoever. And in 1953, suddenly, he dies. And Felix Frankfurter, who was also on the court, who didn't like Vinson very much, said that his sudden death was the first real proof in his lifetime that there was a God. Okay? They got rid of Vinson and Dwight Eisenhower appoints Earl Warren, who had never been a judge. He'd been the governor of California. He had been fairly moderate, although he went through quite a kind of a personal, almost personal revolution in the 1940s. There was a famous book called American Dilemma, American Dilemma by Gunnar Mirdal, who was a Swedish sociologist economist, talking about the American dilemma of race. And Earl Warren read that book, all thousand pages of it. But Dwight Eisenhower didn't know that he'd read that book. Eisenhower thought he was appointing a safe conservative who would never rock the vote. Of course Eisenhower, President Eisenhower later said it was the worst mistake he ever made in his life in appointing Earl Warren because it was Earl Warren who was able to craft through his personality, just sheer personal power to craft a unanimous decision on May 17th, 1954. And maybe I'll stop there, but of course, just let me say one thing, historians, when they look at this, we often see the irony of the Brown decision, the sense that it's a milestone, it's an incredible event. It creates a revolution of rising expectations, that maybe America can really live up to its democratic ideals. But in fact, it doesn't deliver on that promise for more than a decade and a half. So it's, for a long time, it's deeply disappointing to Thurgood Marshall, to many African-Americans, to many white Americans. And so what, although it sets a kind of plateau of citizenship and gives African-Americans a place in society and a hope, a great hope that things will change, they don't change in the near term. And of course, what that does is that it says, well, if we can't depend on the courts, even the Supreme Court says things have to change and it doesn't happen, we've got to depend on ourselves. We've got to take this struggle out of the courts and into the streets. And that's what Martin Luther King does, that's what John Lewis did, that's what the non-violent civil rights movement did, which attempted a moral transformation, not just of black America, but of white America and really of American history. I don't know, do we fully appreciate how important this is in the scope of world history, with society so deeply rooted in racism, trying to find a way out? Certainly, we're still trying to find our way out, but the Brown decision had a lot to do with that, giving people the, I had the courage to go on, but the realization that they were going to have to do it themselves. And so there's certain irony there, that it's a kind of double-edged sword in terms of the historical reality and value of the Brown decision.
Thank you so much, Ray. Yes. I told you that I had a hard job this evening. So I also want to touch on what Ray talked about, just to highlight a bit of his bio because he is very generous to go straight into everything. But he is the author of many civil rights history books, including one that was just released, what, two, three months ago, on John Lewis. And this is a book that all of you should consider adding to your libraries. I like to say that we used to be on that bus together for years until Ray got famous because he went on to Oprah with all of the Freedom Riders that were living. If you ever can find that Oprah episode of Freedom Riders coming together, it was one of her final episodes, I think, wasn't that? Was it?
One of the last four.
Yeah, one of the last four episodes. It is remarkable. It's something to definitely find. So thank you so much, Ray, for getting us started. I love where you concluded because I think that that is a really wonderful place to pick up with Ms. Chloe Coney. And Ms. Chloe Coney is going to talk to her, to us about her journey through integrating the schools, the choice, your participation in the Hillsborough schools prior to making that decision and moving us into you graduating from high school and your decisions for college, et cetera. Would you mind telling your story?
First of all, I'd like to thank you for inviting me. I'm so honored. I'm Chloe Coney and if you know me, I'm going to say I'm a woman that wear many hats. I do wear hats every day, okay? But I was raised in West Tampa and in West Tampa, we had a sense of community. I like to say we had three pillars in our community. Number one, of course, was your family and I was blessed to have my mother, my stepfather, my sister, but I knew everybody else in the community. You know, we formed friends, the next thing we know, we're adopted cousins, okay? We know everybody. And again, the community was mixed. I might have a preacher next door, I have somebody unemployed, I may have my teacher, I may have everybody because again, very few places we could live. The second pillar was our church. And I am a D, so blessed to be raised at Beulah Baptist Institutional Church with the Reverend Dr. Leon A. Lawrie. So many of you that don't know him, he was the president of the state NAACP, but he was also the professor to Dr. Martin Luther King at Morehouse. And then he was later elected as a school board member. But many sermons, even as a child, we would remember him talking to the congregation about getting involved in the fight, in the civil rights fight. Because he was instrumental in integrating the lunchroom counters and your public facilities. So that was poured into me. And then the third was our schools. I went to Downby Elementary School, it was segregated during this time, 1950s. And then I went to Juss and it was just built. And I was looking forward to going to Blake High School and being a Yellow Jacket, Fred. Fred is a tag over there, okay? My husband is a Yellow Jacket. So you know, in communities, you follow behind your cousins and your friends and you knew everybody and, and I mean, just a lot of pride coming out of that community. Well, I had an aha moment in 63, when the President, John Kennedy, came to Tampa. I was in eighth grade. My instructors and my teachers allowed us to leave school and we went down to Grand Central Boulevard and we saw the President. I saw him. And then I saw him on TV and he made a statement that changed my life. He said, "Ask not what your country can do for you, but what can you do for your country?" Now, this little 30-year-old child listening to this. So when my principal, Mr. Harold Clark, and he was always an educator, was always involved and wanting to integrate the schools, came back to the school and he asked what students want to attend to integrate the school system here. And it was three of us. It was Patricia Killens, Henry White and myself. Now, you know, they checked our grades and made sure that we're going to be good students, okay? But I am so grateful that I had teachers that loved us. And even though you hear all that about the old books and not having this and not having that, what we did have, we had a lot of love. Those teachers poured into us every knowledge that they knew. I had teachers such as Randolph Kenzie. I had teachers like Eloise Cabrera, Sylvia Rodriguez Kimball that became the county commission, and Marjorie Mayes. That's the reason my Delta, y'all, okay? All three of the ladies are named, they're all Deltas. But I tell you what, when I got ready to leave Juss to go to West Tampa, Sylvia Kimball pulled me aside, Sylvia Rodriguez at that time, and she said, "Chloe, we poured into you. You're an A and B student, you're really an A student. Now, you leaving this blind school and you going to the white school, you're going to do well. You make us proud. You make us proud." And I want to tell you, when times got hard integrating those schools, I could still hear her in my ear saying, "You make us proud. You're smart. You're going to make As and Bs at that school." And when I left and went to West Tampa in ninth grade, many of the students there had a lot of questions because they had never been around black students before. I'll never forget, I did a poem on Langston Hughes' Dreams. And when I finished, one of my classmates walked up to me and said, "Oh, you're from New York." And I said, "No, I'm from the other side of the track, the railroad track. That's a West Tampa, you ran the Rome Street." But I was proud to say that I was from Tampa. And then I was also inducted into the West Tampa National Society. And then I went to Jefferson. It was easier at Jefferson because many of the kids from West Tampa went to Jefferson. And it was just more of an Hispanic school. And I was selected as a student with the Student Council, a secretary, I made National Society, I was a flag girl, you name it. Everybody in the whole school knew Chloe Coney. Well, I was looking forward to my senior year and all of a sudden Hillsborough County School decided they're going to close the old Jefferson. My old Jefferson, my 12th grade year. Now, that was heartbreaking, number one. But then to send us to Hillsborough High School. Now, Hillsborough High School is the oldest high school in Hillsborough County, probably in the state. When you talk about white privilege, it's definitely white privilege. I was in shock, ruled away, could not believe. The first pep rally, sitting in auditorium, and I'm watching them run around the school with the Confederate flag. I'm watching them sing Dixie in the land of cotton. And I said to myself, "Where am I?" And can you imagine this is being sanctioned by the school system? They allowed that. Now, you've got to remember that, I came from Beulah Baptist Church. I told you about my teachers. We didn't have Afro then, but I was ready to, you know? And my heart was broken many times, because I knew who I was. But many days, I was told that I was not good enough to be in the National Society, even though I was inducted at Jefferson High School. I was called the N-word, sometimes put in the back of the classroom. I'm being honest with y'all, I hated the school. So when I graduated in 1968 with honors, I would have snatched my diploma and said, "I'll never come back to the school again, never." I had scholarships to University of South Florida, Florida State. I said, "No, I'm going to Florida anyhow. I am not going to integrate any more schools. Come on, rally us, any more rallies in the house, okay?" But I tell you, God has a sense of humor. All that I went through and all of that I said I wasn't going to go back to and all the hurt and everything else I've been through. 2021, Hillsborough High School inducted me into the Hall of Fame. Let's give God a clap. Little old Chloe. So again, somebody has to do it, and that's what I heard from the Reverend Dr. Leon Laurie. And you were never too young. So we need to make sure we give that message to our children now, because many of them are going through some of those same situations. But again, I thank God at 13, I knew who I was.
Thank you so much, Ms. Coney, and congratulations on the holiday. That's amazing. Fred, you were in the schools right about the same time as Ms. Coney. Can you share a little bit of your journey?
I'll be happy to, and thank you, Tammy, and to everyone here for coming out and hearing these stories and reflecting with us on the times that we went through during the days of segregation. When I came along, and I'm a little ahead of Chloe in school, her husband Ernest is one year ahead of me, raise your hand, Ernest, so everybody can see Ernest Coney. Ernest graduated from Howard W. Blake High School on the west side of Tampa, and of course, I graduated from Middleton High School on the east side. We had a little rivalry going. I tell Ernest every time I see him, I can still hear the announcer at Phillips Field during the football games. There goes Coney into the end zone again with another touchdown against my Middleton Tigers, he broke our heart many nights. But we're dear friends, and you know, we had a fraternity and a sorority of black people because the one thing that segregation did, there were many ugly things that was responsible for, but the one thing it did, it brought us together as a village. We had to come together to survive. When there was one park in the early days, back in the 50s and even early 60s, that black people could go to and not be harassed, one in the entire city. Even though we were in Tampa, 20 miles away from St. Petersburg and the beaches, we couldn't go anywhere near the beaches. So we had lakes with the alligators and the snakes and everything that went along with it, those were our beaches. I mean, just so many memories. But I did want to say, every time I come to St. Petersburg, South St. Petersburg, I live, actually live in North St. Petersburg, but every time I come to this part of the city, especially down 34th Street and I pass Jonathan Gibbs High School, it reminds me of the man who was the architect of public education in the state of Florida in the 1870s. I didn't say black education. He was the Secretary of Education for the state of Florida, appointed by the governor, who was Ashen Hart, a Tampa lawyer. I can imagine all of the pitfalls that he had to endure and the hatred and the racism back in the 1870s. You can imagine what it was then, after the Civil War, when the South was still very angry about that war of northern aggression that cost them their property, black people, that cost them in many situations, their land, their homes, they forfeited a lot. They lost the war, that is what happens when you lose a war. And some people are still fuming over that and trying to relive that. But Jonathan Gibbs was an example of black excellence. We have so many examples of black excellence. Chloe didn't go into much of her background, but she is a giant in what she has been able to achieve in Tampa. And hearing her background, coming from segregated schools, and then graduating from a school that didn't embrace her the way it should have, until many, many years later, and you know, sometimes we embrace people after they've done well, and we didn't do so early on. But we have so many success stories of people who came through segregated schools, like Ernest, like myself. Is Akil Mohammed Akil here, Iskia? Iskia, some of you may know him. We met at the University of South Florida. I did just the opposite of Chloe, because I went to all-black schools. I wanted to experience something a little different, so I went to USF. Plus, I love eating my mother's cooking, so I didn't have to leave home to go to school. Most of my experiences at USF were pleasant experiences. My best friends were Cuban students and Jewish students. We just kind of automatically, you know, wrapped our arms around each other and we were kind of fighting some of the same things, and we formed that close bond. But then near the end of my sophomore year, and it was right about the time that Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King was assassinated in 1968. And I only had one other black student who I went to class with in my four years at USF. All the other classes I took, I was the only black student there. But there was this one white student who invited me to a birthday party, and he was living in a condo on St. Pete Beach. And I'd never been to St. Pete Beach. I'm 19 years old, had never been to St. Pete Beach and lived in Tampa my whole life. So I drove over and I was there maybe 20 minutes and, you know, I was just getting to greet everybody there, and I knew a lot of them, because we went to classes together at USF. And the phone rang. So the young man who invited me went over, picked up the phone, talked for a few minutes, and then he came over to me and he said, "Fred, I don't know how to tell you this, but the man who owns the condo wanted to know who invited you." And I said, "Well, I did." You know, he's a friend of mine, we go to college together. And he told him, "Well, you get that coon out of here." And let me tell you, I can still hear those words ringing in my ear, and I'm 75 years old, and that was a long time ago. It stung so badly, but I knew it wasn't coming from him, so I thanked him for inviting me. And as I drove back home, at the age of 19, I said, "One day, I'm going to own some land over there near the beach, and nobody's going to be able to kick me out." So I've been living in North St. Pete on Boca Seeger Bay for the last 11 years. And it feels good. Let me just say this, and then I'll end. We have so many battles that we have fought and persevered and been successful in overcoming and achieved so much over the years. When I look back at the fight, and I was Human Rights Director for the City of Tampa. I retired after 32 years, and I can look back, we enforced Title VII of the 1964 Civil Rights Act, employment discrimination, the Fair Housing Act, 1968. We handle over 150 cases every year. So I read those cases and we talked to those complainants, and I knew firsthand some of the things that were still happening. This was in the early 2000s. But what we have to do today with these new challenges facing us here in the Sunshine State is the same thing we did back in the 60s and even before that. We've got to work together, we've got to share our experiences, draw strength from each other, and celebrate small victories, because the small victories add up one after the other. We've got to vote, and vote with conviction for good people who are going to lead us out of the direction that we're headed in now, because the whole country is looking at Florida. And we've got to do better. I know we are better, and we've got to do better. So thank you, Tammy.
Thank you, thank you. So I have a follow-up question for each of you that I hope to get through, but I also would like to reserve a few minutes to be able to cover some questions from the audience. If you haven't yet, feel free to start writing a card for our consideration for a question to our panelists, and you can drop that in the glass bowl whenever you have that completed. Now, if you were listening closely with Ms. Coney's initial remarks, talking about stepping into school integration, you would hear that she said the date, 1963. Is that right, 1963? So that's a few, I know I'm not very good at timelines and math, but that's a few years after 1954. So Ray, I was hoping that you could maybe talk about round two and the language that really provided an opportunity for school districts and elected officials and folks across the South to rise up against the promise of Brown versus Board of Education.
Yeah, that's a critical part of the story, is that there are two Brown decisions. The original, which was the unanimous decision, which was very encouraging, Thurgood Marshall predicted that all the schools will be completely desegregated within five years. He really thought that would happen, even though, you know, he was in the trenches, he knew how much he was facing. But on May 31st, 1955, a little over a year, they had the implementation decision. So how are we going to actually desegregate the schools? And it's at that point where the court sort of lost its nerve, I think. They were terrified that the reaction so far in the white South, in the upper South, in the border states, actually quite a few schools were desegregated in that first year. But the deep South, there was, you know, kind of total, kind of stonewalling of the decision. In fact, one of the very few newspapers to endorse the Brown decision was the St. Pete Times. Only a handful of papers had anything good to say about it, but Nelson Pointer and the St. Pete Times, they really did themselves well in that situation. Of course, for that, they were known in many circles as a communist newspaper, because they endorsed the Brown decision. But the implementation decision came up, of course, with the famous phrase, "What you have to do, if you're running the schools in the South, you have to desegregate with all deliberate speed." How's that for a vague statement? With all deliberate speed. Which, of course, that ended up meaning you can delay, delay, delay. And it really, historians point to this as a great example of if you're trying to get rid of a corrupt social system or a corrupt leader, how do I put this? You don't want to wound them, you need to kill them, right? You're not doing yourself any favor by sort of losing your nerves, which is exactly what happened. And the implementation was given to the lower courts, and they didn't really get much direction from the Supreme Court. And of course, Dwight Eisenhower had really no interest whatsoever in desegregating the schools. He was very much opposed to the Brown decision. And so in the last three years of his administration, before John Kennedy took over, the pace of school desegregation actually went way down. Essentially, the federal government, at that point, had given up. That they, you know, they had the Brown decision, they were sort of proud of it, that it said something positive about American democracy, but they didn't really have the courage to follow through. And it's only in the late 60s that, or a series of court decisions, which put some teeth back into Brown, finally, most school districts had to desegregate. For example, here, although the desegregation process started in Penrose County in 1962 with one elementary school in Clearwater, the high schools were not desegregated, except for just token, until 1971, '71. And that's, actually, that's late for Florida. Even the county where I went to high school, Nassau County, which is a very conservative area in North Florida, they desegregated in 1967, and most counties did. So we were really behind the times. And in fact, when desegregation did happen here, there was a kind of a mini civil war at Dixie Hollins High School. Violence, all kinds of protests. It was really an ugly situation. It passed, and through a lot of community alliance and a lot of really courageous people, finally, you started having blacks being elected to public office. Bette Wimbush became the vice mayor, she was a really courageous woman, black attorney, and later others who followed her, really made a huge difference. But Brown II really muddied the waters. I can just tell you one short, personal story. I moved from Washington DC on August 28th, 1963. Does that ring a bell? That's the day of the March on Washington. And the night before, my father was transferred to the Navy to Jacksonville. And we'd gone up to Massachusetts for a visit, and we were staying in a motel outside of Washington in suburban Maryland, and my parents were tired, they'd driven down from Massachusetts, they'd go to their room, take a nap, I'd go to the swimming pool. And it's completely filled, of course, with marchers who are going to go to the March on Washington the next day. And I'd say, two-thirds of them were black. You didn't see that in 1963. It wasn't technically illegal in Maryland, but it just wasn't done. So there's this whole interracial group, I'm in their pool with about two hours, it was a life-changing experience for me, to tell you the truth. Because they started talking to me, and they kept saying, "Kid, you want to see some real history? You can't go to Florida tomorrow. You've got to come with us to the march. Dr. King's going to be there, 250,000 people, it's going to be incredible. You're going to see history being made." So I'm totally intoxicated, and I go up to the room and tell my parents, "We cannot go to Florida tomorrow. We have got to go to this march." And I really, I was hopeful, but, well, in the Hollywood version, we would have gone to the march, okay? But in real life, I'm in the backseat stewing as we're driving, particularly after I found out what really happened at the march. And many years later, at the 50th anniversary, I was there. I made sure, with John Lewis, actually. But I always lamented that I missed that chance. But, so we go to Florida, and I actually end up in a small high school in Nassau County, living with my grandmother, because the schools were all disaccredited in Jacksonville. First time in American history, an entire system had been disaccredited. So I lived with my grandmother 40 miles north. And a couple months later, of course, John Kennedy is assassinated, and I'm trying to deal with this context I'm in, you know, this incredibly open racism and opposition to school desegregation. And I really, I was, you know, a 15-year-old kid, I'm just trying to survive, but I had one argument after another with people, and I was really discouraged. Well, so on November 22nd, 1963, I'm at the principal's office and I'm walking down, the bell rings, it's 2 o'clock, end of school, which is exactly the time that John Kennedy died. He died at 1 o'clock Central Time. And... And so I'm by myself and the bell rings and all the students just pour out of the classrooms onto these external sidewalks cheering, just cheering. That, and I, I think many of them later probably felt ashamed, but their initial reaction was, "John Kennedy is dead and now we don't have to go to school with black people." You know? And I, I have to tell you, I've never felt so alone in my entire life. And it was just a chilling, chilling experience. And I've talked to other people around the South who've had similar experiences. That's how, that's what I'm suggesting, is that's the depth of feeling, the massive resistance that came into the South after Brown II was just horrifying, really. It's like the region was almost in hysteria. Now, they worked their way out of it, but, but it was, it was a really, really, really difficult time, I think, for anybody who was hoping that the Brown decision was leading to something that would make us a more humane and democratic society. And so it was a tough time to live through for, no matter what your color, no matter where you are, it was a lot, awful lot of ugliness.
Thank you so much for sharing your personal stories, Ray. I really appreciate that. I know so much from sitting on a bus with you for literally hours and hours driving to and from Montgomery, Alabama, but I haven't heard some of those stories, so thank you for sharing them with us. It was really incredible. Yeah. Ms. Coney, I'm going to ask you to, to change your hat. You said how you wear many hats, and I know this of you, that you do in fact wear many, many hats. And in our, in our conversation, we talked about how, as a parent, you were able to also see integration in the implementation through busing, and I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about that.
First, I, I'd like to make sure that I really explained, as you're talking about Brown, 1954, and I integrate the school system in 63. You have to know the times of 63. I mean, we know Little Rock, Arkansas, they called the National Guard. Do you know they were still lynching people? Do you know during this time, Fred and I and my husband, we had to ride the back of the bus? We'd go downtown, we had to drink from the colored water fountains. It was things we could not do. So I must give honor to my mother that had a strong-willed child. Can you imagine your thirteen-year-old daughter come home in 63 and saying, "I'm going to integrate the school system. I'm going to go to that white school." I'll never forget being in a car with my mother and I watched the tears roll down her, her eyes. And she kept saying, "Why you? Why you?" And this little thirteen-year-old, strong-willed girl said, "John Kennedy said..." I asked not what your, you know, my mother did not want to hear that. But I felt that it was my duty and fear was not going to stop me from integrating the school system. Now, I hear, and if you have anything else you want to get into about Hillsborough County, Fred is out of the story, but what I heard was Manny versus Hillsborough County School System was 1962. So the school system knew they were not in compliance. So you had people like my principal, Mr. Harold Clark, Mr. Bingham, Mr. Horton, and of course, my pastor, Reverend Leon Laurie, saying, "We better do something about this." So my husband, and I didn't know that until he told me this last year, he said they came to Blake to integrate the schools there, in high school. He said he and his class may said, "No, we're not going, no way. We're in high school, no." So what they decided to do was to come to the junior high school where we were. And like I said, it was three of us. Now, you have to take in consideration, when I did integrate the school system, we had no black teachers there. So like you said, it was fully integrated in 1971. When I graduated in high school in 68, I think it was maybe twenty of us African-American students to graduate. So we made progress, but I want to add, I got to say this. I left Florida Power in 1989 and took the job at the center manager, Lee Davis, over in East Tampa, and you're sitting between College Hill and Potts. Fourteen hundred units, right Fred?
Public housing.
Public housing. We had a meeting in the community. Those kids was bused to thirty-three different schools. That's 1989. Every time a new school was built in the suburbs, they would come to the inner city and take and snatch those little kids up and bust them, I'm going back to, bust them to the communities. So we started a back-to-school kickoff. We challenged all those schools, all thirty-three different schools, "You come to our community. Come to Lee Davis that is housed there. Meet these parents." Because when we had meetings, we heard most, most of the principals and the, and the school staff say, "Black, black parents won't come. They just won't come, they're not interested." And that wasn't the case. In fact, we put some in our cars, Tanya Hammond, that was with the Police Department Relations, we put parents in our cars and I took them out to Carolwood, I took them to Town and Country. Many of them had never been there before. Had never been to those schools. So can you imagine putting your sixth, seventh, and eighth grade little child on a bus to be bused all over the Hillsborough County? And that was what was happening. And so when we had that back-to-school kickoff there and all the schools came and brought their staff and we went to the community, knocked on the doors and told the parents we're going to give them book bags and everything else, but they had to be there, those parents came out. They got a chance to listen to the parents. Tammy, one of my aha moments was we had a meeting, we would have a meeting once a month with agencies at the Lee Davis, the school system, and like I said, all those schools and other agencies. And one of the teachers said, "I couldn't understand. A book fell on the ground and the student fell to the ground and started crying." She said, "I was trying to help her." And said, "I was wondering what's happening." And I took her home and kept, I wanted to know what her mother, what is wrong with her? You know, she's okay. She didn't realize, living in College Hill, with guns going off, what did the mother tell the child? Get into the tub, fall to the ground. So when she heard that book hit, she thought those was gunshots. And if we don't go where people are and talk to them and truly understand them and what is going on in their lives. And that's the reason I have a problem with the busing and moving all these kids out of their community, taking them far away. But again, those are things that we have to look at now. We're watching our schools become segregated all over again. I'm looking at Potter F. School. And a lot of it's poverty, it's poverty. Not only racial, it's poverty. And now they're doing magnet schools and trying to bust white kids there. Some of it's working, but when they do bust them in, they're in a whole different environment, okay? A lot of times, there's not as much interaction. So again, there's work to be done. And one of the things that I'm getting a little older, and my good friend, the chief, Davis, sitting there, getting older, and we believe in mentoring the next generation. We're going to have to really, really talk to our kids. Tell them the history. Tell them where you've been. But make sure they understand who they are. Because again, what I saw with this busing, it destroyed a lot of our children's self-confidence in themselves. So again, adopt a child and make sure that you pour into them and you have the stories of what I talked about, my three Delta women that poured into me. So thank you for letting me tell my story, okay?
Ms. Coney, you have already started us perfectly. First of all, a question here was, how did your parents feel? So I'm going to set that one aside because you touched on that. Thank you so much for that. And my follow-up question for, for Fred has led in directly with that, which is that our, our cover of the publication this evening has the separate "Not Equal," and I think you really began to show that even once Brown versus Board of Education was decided, the implementation to get to a unitary school system, one, not one for black and one for white, but one school for all students, that implementation in and of itself was not equal, right? And so the decisions around busing and the decisions around which schools stayed open and which ones didn't was not equal. And I, I know Fred, for you, your high school alma mater, Middleton, has a history and I know you'll be touching on your, your, your being, you know, that being your alma mater, but also your role as the curator for African-American history at the Tampa History Center, when you tell us a little bit about Middleton High School and the other blacks, black high schools that were, were closed during integration in Hillsborough County.
Well, thank you, Tammy. I'll be happy to. George Schroeder Middleton came to Tampa from Charleston, South Carolina in the 1890s. He worked for the post office as a mail carrier, one of the best jobs a black man could have in the early 1900s, until the Woodrow Wilson administration eliminated most of the blacks who were working in those positions in the federal government. No more black mail carriers, especially in the South. So he learned the insurance business and became Secretary-Treasurer of Central Industrial Insurance Company, which became Central Life Insurance Company. At one time, the president of Central Life was Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune. She would come to Tampa for the meetings and I don't have to tell most of you who Dr. Bethune was and what she did founding that college in Daytona Beach, which is now BCU, Bethune-Cookman University. So George Middleton was a tremendous role model to many of us. And he died in 1933. The next year, the school board named the new high school in East Tampa, George Schroeder Middleton High School. That school closed as a high school in 1971, along with Howard W. Blake and some eighty other former black high schools in the state of Florida ceased to operate as high schools. They were repurposed, that's the popular word, I think, that's used now. They were repurposed to junior high schools or some other use, but very few of them remained high schools throughout that era. Gibbs High School was an exception. And I always admired the folk in St. Petersburg who said, "Excuse me, hell no. You're not closing Blake, Gibbs High School. Any gladiators here today? A few gladiators?" I always admired the fact, the same thing happened in Orlando with Jones High School. They said, "No, you're not going to close Jones High School," and forget most of the schools in South Florida. Booker T. Washington, they would have burned Miami down if they closed that school. But, and people couldn't understand, well, why did they want to hold on to something that many people thought was an inferior product? Because they didn't know. And here's one of the secrets why we did so well in those black schools, Ernest. As Chloe said, we not only had compassionate teachers, we had brilliant teachers. Many of our teachers got their master's degrees at Ohio State University, Indiana University, Michigan State. You know why? Because they couldn't go to UF in Gainesville. They couldn't go to these schools in the South. So their tuition was paid. Just get them out of the state, let them go wherever. And they came back and poured, as Chloe said, all of the brilliance and all of the compassion and all of the drive that they had into us. So when Middleton High School closed in 1971 as a high school, those high school students were bused to eight different high schools all over Hillsborough County. Not too long after that, we began to have something we had never experienced in our black neighborhoods. We had gangs. These kids didn't know each other anymore. And they began to fight each other like we'd never experienced, we'd never experienced any of that. So now we have, you know, things happening that, that it's hard to imagine what we do to each other in, in our communities. So Middleton High School was a, a passion of mine when I began working for the Tampa Bay History Center and we started gathering artifacts for a black history exhibit we have. We have artifacts from Blake High School, we have artifacts from Middleton High School. We try to tell these stories when I go out into the community, not just in February. Thank God now, I'm getting invitations year-round to tell these stories and these successes because look at what we accomplished with the little that we had. But we didn't need much because we learned how to take a little bit and stretch it. And we learned it from our brilliant teachers. So that's a, a success story that I like to tell. Many years later, Blake High School alumni and the school board built a brand-new Blake High School right around the corner from the Middleton Blake. That was important. The same thing happened at Middleton a few years later. So again, we had some brilliant people who poured everything they had into us and that's what we try to do with the young people that we influence today.
Well, I was just going to briefly tell a John Lewis story, kind of apropos of what Fred just said. John Lewis grew up in utter poverty in Pike County, Alabama. No paved roads, no indoor plumbing, no electricity. He was one of ten children, he was the only one to ever finish high school. And, but he was a voracious reader from the time he was a young boy. I think, he claimed because he didn't like to chop cotton, he didn't like farm work, but his first protest was when he was sixteen years old, he wanted to get a library card at the all-white public library in Pike County. Of course, they threw him out and, and, but with John Lewis, that was never the end of it. He went and did a petition, tried to circulate it around his, his black school to, to get the library, of course, desegregated. And most of the kids were too terrified to sign it. He got a couple of his cousins to sign it, but, so he was unsuccessful in his first protest, but many years later, 1998, he published his wonderful memoir called Walking with the Wind. I highly commend it to you, it's the most extraordinary memoir ever written, I think, about the civil rights movement. And it was number one on the bestseller list, New York Times, all that. And so the public library in Troy, Alabama invited him as an honored, honored guest, the same library that thrown him out in 1956. And so he always had a kind of a twinkle in his eye. So he, he accepts and he comes and then he says, "I want, I want a library card." That's the first thing he said. "I'm not leaving till I get a library card." Of course, it had desegregated many years earlier, but I think he had a sense of moral victory if, 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 if nothing else. But I think, Fred, what you were talking about is how the closing of all those black schools, mainstream whites had no appreciation for black history. You know, they believed in Africa as the dark continent and that racial inferiority and they, they had, they were just ignorant, really, you know? And there's no way that they could know the, the kind of pride and traditions that, that you, you had. I never forget when I was a senior in high school on Amelia Island, the schools, 1965, the schools did not desegregate until 67, but the Peck High School was the all-black high school. And they had a quite distinguished principal. I remember being so struck by how he looked when he came in. I, I was in a classroom, required Problems of American Democracy class. It was actually, it was capitalism versus communism. And it was this kind of propaganda class, you know? The typical, our baseball coach, I was a pitcher on the baseball team, was our social studies teacher. And he was from Newberry, South Carolina, extremely racist and conservative. So the, our principal of the school brings this, the Peck High School principal in and introduces him briefly and, and I remember how distinguished he looked, you know? And he's only there ninety seconds or so. And the baseball coach, that our teacher, who'd been telling us all semester about how great America was and how other countries were inferior, he made a point of, just after the principal left, he said, he told a student to go to the back of the classroom and open the windows to let the stink out. One of the most gratuitous- One of the most gratuitous acts of racism I've ever, I mean, it just... And he was my coach, but I never spoke to him again. And it was just one of these incredibly ugly moments where the corruption of the system is revealed to you, just how deep it goes and how long we had to go to somehow get rid of that system.
Thank you, Ray. Our conversation from the audience asks us to talk about the what is next. And I think, you know, Ms. Coney, you indicated schools are just desegregated, right? And Fred, you talked about implementation, and we see resources going not equally, right? Unequally being applied to schools in historically black neighborhoods, in minority areas, in minority neighborhoods. So, we know that that continues to exist, and you talked about some of the destruction of the black community, and we see how that exists. So, we touched on a few things along the way, but I'd like just a parting comment from each of you of how do we continue to persevere here? How do we continue to be the hero that you were, Ms. Coney, to integrate the schools and to continue moving us forward together?
I think, if we really look at what's happening now, I think these private vouchers are destroying public education, y'all. I was looking at one of the videos, and they talked about that when they got ready to integrate the schools in Arkansas, where most of the white parents pulled their children out and put them in private school, so they would not have to go to schools with black students. Well, you see that today. I mean, public school is underfunded. My heart goes out because my grandmother taught school 45 years in Fort Myers, and my sister's a teacher, my aunt. We have some phenomenal teachers out here that committed. But what's happening, underpaid, the work environment, all of the bulk. So, we're in a very delicate time. And I know, again, like I said, with the magna schools, and some of them are better than others. I don't know how we're gonna solve this. But it's gonna have to, because a lot of it, like I said, that is happening negatively is because of poverty and racial. And the schools, especially the schools, black schools in the inner city, is getting more and more blacker, and of course, they're more and more poor because they don't have, like Plant High School in Tampa, which is almost like a private school, it is a public school. But you know, their parents got plenty of money, the PTA, they can send their kids everywhere. And then, when I look at our schools, and I see them being underfunded. So, one of the things I challenge people to do is adopt a school. Go to Potter, go to Shihei. You know, when they're raising money, I like to make sure that my husband and I give something back. And I think this is some of the things we may have to take personal responsibility for. But politically, I don't know what we're gonna do with Tallahassee, okay? And those vouchers. So, y'all better go out and vote, that's the only thing I can say, all right?
Yeah, yes, please, vote early and often this year. You know, when I was a student in Florida, as a kid, 60s, Florida had its problems, but there was a saying, you know, "We're bad, but we're not as bad as Alabama and Mississippi." Well, that's been reversed today. I just spent a week in Alabama giving some lectures on civil rights, and people kept saying, "Well, we're bad in Alabama, but we're not as bad as Florida." You know? When you think about this campaign against black history and against academic freedom, I mean, we're really the laughingstock of the country right now. We've gotta do something about it, it's just tragic, I think, what's happening. Well, I think we all have to band together to somehow reverse this, because it hasn't always been this way. Florida made some great progress in the 60s and 70s and 80s, and had some real inspiring leaders. And how we got to where we are now, I don't know, but it's, we're not in a good place.
Fred, how do we bring back even the high school rivalry, the spirit of the high school rivalry that you opened us up about this evening? How do we get back to that?
Okay, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
I was saying, how do we get back to that pride in the black community that you were talking about with Mr. Coney as you walked in today?
Okay. What a great question for a historian. We've gotta learn our history. There are so many lessons of triumph and perseverance and stick-to-itiveness, examples that we can look at, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, just look at the wheels that have already been invented. Do any of you know here Attorney Jacqueline Hubbard? Raise your hand, okay, quite a few people. President of the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, St. Petersburg branch, ASALA. Please, get involved with ASALA if you're not already involved. I'm president emeritus of the Tampa branch of ASALA. There are six branches in the state of Florida, no other state has more than three branches. We have six in Florida, that's to our credit. What ASALA is doing is adopting nationwide a concept that we can go back to 1964 in rural Mississippi, the Freedom Schools. So, we have had a Freedom School here in St. Petersburg, where we're teaching black history to children, and I understand this year, the St. Petersburg branch of ASALA is going to do classes for adults. Because let's face it, we didn't learn our history in school, we really didn't. I mean, we lived it, but we didn't really study black history in the 1960s. We studied history, I wish we had learned more black history, but what we're doing now is beyond what you can do in the public schools, because as you know, there's so many limitations now on teaching black history in public schools. You have to almost go underground to do it. So, we're going underground. And ASALA is encouraging branches all over the country to teach black history. So, in Tampa, what we've done, we've sort of adopted a private school, Bible Truth Ministries, and they say, "Yes, you can come and teach all the black history you want, Mr. Hearns." So, our ASALA group is doing that, and we now have at the Tampa Bay History Center an area where we have black history, travails and triumphs, a permanent exhibit. We bust those kids over there, we take them on tours, we talk about these heroes and sheros, people that everybody should know beyond Martin Luther King and Rosa Parks, okay? Our story is, that's part of our story, but there's so much more. So, that's one thing we can do while we try to get back on track with public education, and go back to the reason that it was created by Jonathan Gibbs, to do the most good for the most children who needed the most. And we've got to teach our history. If we have to do it Sunday, at Sunday School, find a way to do it at the churches if we need to. That's one solution to a big problem.
Yes. Oh, I am so grateful for all of those comments, I see some claps, yes, let's get those claps going. So, in conclusion of our panel this evening, we had some charges, right? In there, we heard Ms. Coney talk about supporting teachers in schools. You don't have to have a youth in the schools to be able to support a teacher, to support a school. To vote, I think that was a common theme for all of us. Fred says, "Learn your history, find organizations like ASALA, support them, get involved, learn the history through programs like ASALA and the Tampa History Center." Anne Pinellas remembers...
And Carter Woodson.
And the Carter Woodson Museum, so many incredible places to learn history. And then Ray says, "Don't be Alabama," that's really important for us to all remember. And then finally, for me, I'd like to add our charge, to continue to have conversations like we've had this evening. Let's listen to these incredible heroes and sheros that we have. Let's make sure that we create space for dialogue, to ensure that we're connecting with people who are different than us, to deteriorate any of those assumptions that we make about each other, and continue to build a more equitable space for the future. So, thank you so much to everyone for coming this evening. I know I'm gonna hand it back over to Josh, but before I do, I have one final comment, and that is, if Matt would please stand up, I'm gonna put you on the spot. Yep, he doesn't know I'm doing this. Matt is one of our colleagues from Miami, Mosaic Miami. He got a flat tire on his way here. So, he came all the way from Miami and had a flat tire on his way. So, thank you, Matt, for being here, thank you to our partners across the state. Thank you for the Tampa Bay newspapers and education for being our partner in this initiative. Thank you, most importantly, for you as an audience being here, and thank you to our panelists for sharing their beautiful, powerful journeys to help inform us into our next chapters. So, thank you so much, please give another repose to our panel. All right, Josh, you wanna just come up to say a couple of things? We won't, we'll just sit here.
All right, give it up one more time, thank you all, thank you to the panelists, thank you Tammy, appreciate it. Dean, if you could go to the next slide, a few parting words before you get out of here. Two upcoming events that really kind of relate to this conversation. In two nights, we're gonna be hosting a screening of The Right to Read by our community partners, Seniors in Service. So, movie screening, panel, Q and A discussion, similar to the format tonight. So, we really encourage you to sign up for that, and you can do that here at thecenter.org. And next week, please join Marcus and myself as we take a walk down our history wall and take a deeper dive into the racial history of South St. Petersburg, and to get a better understanding of why barriers continue to exist today. So, we would love to have you out, sign up for our newsletter. And more importantly, we have locked the doors until you finish the survey, so that is your ticket out the door. But thank you all again for coming, have a great night, drive safe.